We're going to begin this evening with a public hearing on the 2025 to 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update. I'd like to call on Paul Gerald with the Three Rivers Commission to come up and tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor Gerald. Good to be with you all again. It's been a minute. I helped you guys with the 2015 Plan Update, and I'm back. So it's good to be back in West Point. It's been a minute for myself. My colleague Stephanie has been down here a few times. I think she helped you guys with the second, first and second round of your Recreational Trails Program grant and public outreach events. And I see that she was, another thing that we're involved with with the DRI process, the Developments of Regional Impact, I see that's on your agenda tonight, too. So another thing that we're involved with with Regional Commission. If you're not familiar with us, we cover 10 counties, and I'm in the planning department. And we are the smallest department at Three Rivers, but we also have the Transit Agency, and we have Workforce Development, and we have the Area Agency on Aging. So if you seek Three Rivers, we can be any of those things at any time you need us. Every five years, you update the Comprehensive Plan, and that's a document that every local jurisdiction in Georgia is encouraged to have. We kind of used to say required to have. You kind of are if you want to do grants and you want to do permits and that kind of thing, but technically, you don't have to have one. And that was kind of an epiphany for me just a few years ago. But so I've just kind of, I've got a real short presentation here just to kind of give you guys an idea of what goes in the plan and why you do a Comprehensive Plan. But it's really to establish a community-based vision. So I said in the beginning that we update the plan every five years, but it's really a 20-year vision. So when we're talking about visionary goals and strategies and needs for the community, we're thinking 20 years ahead. And we always think, God, 20 years feels forever away, but it's really not, not at all. But the process is to establish that vision. We also have a, what we call a Needs Assessment as part of the plan. So part of the plan talks about what needs and opportunities are located in the community. So it's kind of a Needs Assessment, kind of seeing what works well for you, what needs to be worked on, what can we address to help move our vision forward. Goals and strategies. So goals are those long-term strategies that rarely ever really change that much. Your goals are kind of your goals, but those strategies underneath each goal may vary each time you do a Plan Update, so we want to capture that. We want to build upon any planning efforts or initiatives that had happened since your last Plan Update. So you may have gone through a master plan process of some sort. You may have done some rezonings. You may have expanded your city limits by some capacity. You may have had other initiatives done, housing studies, that kind of thing. We want to make sure that your Comprehensive Plan, which is your guiding document, encompasses all those things that have been going on. We want to formalize an Implementation Plan. So a large part of the Comprehensive Plan Update is your Implementation Plan or your Community Work Program. Some of you may remember it being called a Short-Term Work Program, but that's your five-year project list. That's the most important projects that you want to see done in the next five years. Those are typically items that you kind of have an idea of what cost estimates are for it, what is that going to cost the city, what kind of partners will we put together to put those projects into place? What kind of timeframe are we looking at? Is this a project that we're going to have out the docket in a year or two, or is it going to take all five years or even more to get complete? And then what funding sources are out there? What ideas do we have when it comes to funding these particular projects? Would it be SPOs? Would it be a grant? Would it be any kind of other partnerships or funding sources out there? And all this process, like I said in the beginning, allows you as a city to apply for grants and permits. But again, we want to emphasize, the main reason for doing a Comprehensive Plan is to establish that vision and make it be a tool that the council and all your other organizations within the community can use as a guiding document. And of course, all of this goes into keeping your qualified local government status up in current. That's the technical term for what the city has to have in place to be able to apply for grants and funding and all those official things. And all this kind of comes in under the state law of 1989 Georgia Planning Act. That's kind of our guiding state code there. Again, 20-year outlook updated every five years. We covered that. This is kind of the roundtable of who's all involved. You kind of think, well, who's important when it comes to a Comprehensive Plan Update? Well, basically, everybody. We're going to kind of start with your city staff, council, planning commissions, us as the update team. There's a steering committee that we'll put together. We'll talk about that in just a second. The general public and the community stakeholders out there in the community that may live here, may work here, may own property here, and of course, all your elected officials again. And more detail about the Plan Steering Committees, this is just kind of our group that we kind of sit down and kind of get into the nitty-gritty regarding the Plan Update. The purpose is to oversee and guide this update plan process. And there's not a whole lot of rules according to the state about who goes on to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, but they have two requirements. They want to see at least one or one or max two council members as part of that plan group. If you get too many, you're going to have to advertise all your meetings. You don't want to do that. So you kind of want to stick to one or two council members. And then someone representing the economic development sector within your community. A lot of the times, that can be a Main Street Director, it can be a DDA person, it could be an IDA person, business owner, just someone who really kind of is the kind of a mover and shaker in your community when it comes to economic development. And we want to involve any of the local stakeholders. You have educators, you have real estate, you have developers, you have business folks, all the people who make your community work and drive, who want to be part of the Plan Committee. Other parts of public participation with the Plan Update, we typically, we consider the Steering Committee itself as part of that, but also, we typically would have an open house slash town hall, community visioning type event, and we usually do a community survey of some sort. And we want to make sure that those questions in that survey are kind of the questions we want to ask that you are curious about as a council or as a community that you want to ask in greater citizenry. We typically don't like to make those too, too long. We want people to be actually be engaged and want to fill out the surveys. We try to keep those limited, but to get as much information as we can. And then there's a review process after all this is said and done that will take place. That's usually typically a 30-day process, can be, can be shorter. And that's when we send the plan out to neighboring jurisdictions and affiliated agencies for their input. The Plan Framework, I've kind of touched on this a little bit, but the main parts of the plan are your community goals, your needs and opportunities, your land use, which is your future land use map, your future geographical vision for the city, and that Community Work Program, that five-year Priority Work Program list. And we do have to talk about broadband, too. I'm guessing, I was looking at your broadband map earlier, most of our communities in our 10-county area municipalities are pretty well covered by broadband, but we want to make sure there's not pockets out there that need to be addressed. Sometimes we have a community that they have great coverage in residential areas in their downtown, but the industrial park is lacking or something. So you've got different pockets like that that are in place. So we want to make sure your broadband goals are included as well. This is your current vision statement. I won't read it verbatim, but as the stakeholder committee sits down, we'll probably take a look at this and see if it's still current. But I read through it earlier today, and it's, I like it. I think it, I don't think it needs a whole lot of tweaking, but we can certainly look at updating that if we need to. But I think it pretty much talks about what the great things going on in West Point and what the kind of things you kind of want to strive to be and continue on with in the future. So I think it's a good one, but we'll sit there and look at that again as well. So considering the future land use part of the Comprehensive Plan, I've just kind of dropped in your current character areas map. So this is your current character area map slash future land use map. Those terms were synonymous in the DCA, State of Georgia world. But as you can see, you've got, I don't know, seven, eight-ish or so zones that you've got considered in your, on your map. So we'll sit down and look at that as well. I think these are very, very well done and very accurate, and I don't think there'll be a whole lot of tweaking of those, but it's, character areas and future land use are kind of a, a bridge between what is currently on the ground zoning or future land use-wise, but also what can we envision these places to become. So it's kind of a mix of both of those things. And y'all are growing, for sure. You've grown up north a lot, you've grown south and into Harris County more, so you've kind of, you've got quite the geography. And we're looking at our proposed timeline here, so we'll, here we are in May for the first public hearing. We will get that committee, Steering Committee kind of going, and we'll sit down with that group and comb through the current plan and update it, and hopefully have a second public hearing somewhere in the August and September timeframe, once we have the draft, the draft plan completed, and we'll hopefully send that off to DCA for their 30-day review at the end of August or maybe somewhere in September. And the plan is due to be adopted by the local government by October to keep your QLG status up and running. And here I am again. This is my email address and my work cell, and you can reach me anytime, but I'd be happy to take any questions from the mayor or the city council or staff or anyone in the audience if they have any questions about the current plan.
Anybody have a question?
Yes, sir. Paul, do you do this for Truap County as well?
We had done Truap County's plan in the past, but we were not doing it this round. We are working with the cities of what you guys in West Point, we're working with Hobensville, we're assisting the city of La Grange. We did theirs last time, but we're not doing theirs by ourselves. We're just kind of there on a, as a.
Does that mean they selected a different competitor of yours to do it, or is that?
No, actually, Truap County and La Grange are doing theirs in-house this time. So using their own planning staff.
Second question I have is, have you selected the Steering Committee? Because it looks like it was due in May.
That's just kind of an arbitrary kind of an idea of when we'll get going on that. Sometimes communities have an idea of who they want on before they have the first public hearing, but it's certainly not required. But it'd be good, be good to get that done as soon as possible.
Okay, so you haven't selected.
No, certainly, no.
Okay.
No, and every community does that differently, and sometimes they'll, if you're a ward city where your city council has different wards, sometimes they'll appoint a person per ward, that kind of thing, but that's not, that's just an example. Like I said before, we, you kind of want to just involve all the people that you know would make good productive members of a community that would work a lot. And the current plan actually lists who served last time, so that gives you a good idea of who to involve, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in public who wants to make comment? If not, we will close the public hearing, and let's go ahead and let Chief Carter introduce us to our newest.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce the newest. He's not a new employee. He's been with us since November of last year. He just completed the 20-week, it's 20, sorry, there's been a lot of changes. It went from 12 weeks to 20 weeks this year. He's the first that we have sent through at that extended academy. Anyway, if you'll stand, this is Mr. Joseph, or excuse me, I apologize, Officer Joseph Robideau. He graduated Friday from Columbus, Georgia, the Regional Police Academy. Among being a, among being a veteran of the United States Air Force, he worked for Department of Homeland Security. He was a federal officer, a national deployment officer, a dual-function officer. He also worked as a deputy jailer and transport officer for Jackson County Sheriff's Office in Michigan, and most recently, he was a jailer for Truap County Sheriff's Office. And he has promised he will be retiring with us, so we have that.
God's on his street, God will bless him occasionally.
No, shit, what, about 30, about 30 years?
Eighteen.
I give you eighteen, I promise. But yeah, y'all, y'all see him on the street or whatever, feel free to get to know him and introduce yourself, and we look forward, we got big plans. Thank y'all.
It's an honor. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call the work session to order. I'll begin by reviewing the agenda. Tonight we have public comment. In new business, we have a presentation by Dr. Rachel Hazel, Superintendent of Truap County Schools. We have a sale of a surplus city vehicle, and we have a site plan for the Speedway 7-Eleven Convenience Store. So that's our items on the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, tonight we have public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comment? Since there's not anybody here, we'll go, move on to new business. We'll begin then with a presentation by Dr. Hazel.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me. I will not take up a lot of your time. Yes, I brought gifts. I didn't actually come to ask for anything either, so that should make me pretty popular right now. I am making my rounds to all of our different municipalities in our county, just to talk a little bit, introduce myself, talk a little bit about our school system, share some things that you may or may not know about the system that serves your, your youngest constituents, and answer any questions that you might have. I do want to talk specifically about West Point. You have West Point Elementary here in West Point, and I'll also talk a little bit more broadly about our school system as a whole. As you may or may not know, we serve over 12,000 students district-wide. We have 1,800 employees that do that work. We have a wonderfully qualified teaching staff. We have a central office staff that is wonderful and led by our Assistant Superintendent Angela Polite is here as well for any curriculum questions that you might have. We, we serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner to our students. Not all of our students participate in the dinner program, but we do serve three meals a day. Our nutrition department is amazing. We transport hundreds of thousands of miles a day with our students that we transport to schools. I wanted to talk a little bit about West Point Elementary. Now, our scores are still embargoed, so we can't release them yet, but there is some really good news coming for West Point Elementary. We are very proud of the progress that we are seeing at that school, and they, you are going to be proud as well when we release those scores. They're doing some very innovative things at West Point, including this year, they piloted a program called Tools of the Trade, and that was a wildly successful event in which they're really highlighting what it means to be an industry partner with a school system and show our students what they can do if they go on it and work right here in our community, and we're very proud of that. We are also seeing that West Point has, I don't know if you've been to West Point lately, if you've walked in school lately, but when you do, you'll see a wheel in the front because they implement the house system. And that is how they come together as a community. Their students are sorted into different houses. They have a little friendly competition. It is their behavior management system. It becomes a part of who they are. And that idea came from the Ron Clark Academy, which is a school that is in Atlanta. Ron Clark and Kim Bearden, who were National Teachers of the Year, started this academy, and it is, it is something, if you haven't ever seen it. However, we have partnered with the Callaway Foundation, and they have supported us using the Ron Clark Academy as a recruitment tool. Now, West Point is so far ahead of the game with their house system that they're going to be one of our first real partner schools with the Ron Clark Academy. And they have cohorts of teachers that are being trained in that model, and we are very, very excited about the work that they are doing there, so please stop by there. Your students go on beyond elementary school and go to Truap High School. Truap High School has a lot to be proud of right now. Don't know if you watch baseball, if you're a baseball fan, but they made us proud. They are the state champions for baseball, and their athletics programs overall are really taking off. Additionally, academically, they are on the rise. They offer advanced program classes throughout the campus for students who are interested in the advanced programs that are offered there. So please, if you haven't gone by and visited lately and seen the athletic complexes or seen the school, let me know. I'd love to take you on a tour of what our schools are doing. In general, this summer, we are focusing on our teachers. Our curriculum department has developed a very comprehensive professional learning program for our teachers. We're paying them to come in. This is an administration that truly believes that to pour into students, we need to pour into our adults, and we believe we are in the people business. And so we are going to invest in our people this summer. We are paying them to come in, to learn, and to grow with us. One other exciting opportunity that we've had with the Callaway Foundation that will bleed into that philosophy is, you may be familiar with the Unity School that was in La Grange. It was a former school building in La Grange. It's a big, beautiful place. The Callaway Foundation has partnered with us, and they will be investing in turning the Unity Center into a professional learning center for our teachers, a place where we can really rethink how we do professional learning, rather than getting a substitute, the traditional method. You get a substitute, they watch your class while you go and learn, and then you have to come back and try to remember what you learned and implemented in the classroom. This will be a center with model classrooms where teachers can bring their classes. They come and they, we have our district staff and our interns who can work with the classes while the teachers are learning, and then the teachers can come back to the model classrooms and implement right away with coaches on sites. It's a little different way to think about professional learning, but we're excited about that opportunity. There are a lot of great things. You mentioned, I was very interested in your strategic plan because we are also writing a strategic plan right now. Ours is through 2025, so we're wrapping up our current strategic plan and working through the new tagline, new goals, new opportunities for our strategic plan as well. So any input that you have, please be on the, that you want to give us, please be on the lookout for that. We'll have multiple ways, online, in-person, to give input, once we have a little better draft compiled, which should be towards the end of the summer. So in the fall, we'll be asking for input. I'll probably be making the rounds again, just to share it with you all. And just really wanted to, I don't think I introduced myself. I am back here as your superintendent for, I did grow up in Coweta County. I'm not new to the area. Grew up in Coweta County, went to schools in Coweta and Pike County, and spent 27 years in Florida with one school district there, and I'm thrilled to be back in this area to serve. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have. I just wanted to take a chance to introduce myself, and I will be back with updates as we get them.
Do I have any questions?
Will you all be still doing the food for the summer?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they are, there is a feeding program, and in fact, I'm glad you brought that up. Our nutrition department, which is outstanding, and I don't think that they get enough credit for really how special they are, because of the efficiency and how well they have done with their feeding program that extends into the summer, there is a corporation up in New York that is coming down, and they are going to be filming a documentary about the work that the Truap County Nutrition System does with the feeding program in the summer, this summer. So we're really proud of that.
Who pays for the feeding that was, is that just in our educational taxes?
No, it's federal dollars. The school nutrition is all federally funded, and so that is through that organ. We don't pay anymore because based on the poverty rate, they, they feed all children in our district. We're on the CEP model, so, but it's all federally funded.
Will they be feeding here in West Point as well?
Yeah, there is a site in West Point, yes.
I don't know if the superintendent's ever come to address us. Thank you. I haven't since I've been here, so.
Well, we appreciate the partnerships with our cities and our municipalities. We appreciate the partnerships, and we want to build those relationships, but we're not asking for anything yet. We'll just keep the phone lines open, so.
You're not showing your whole hand.
Not yet, no, no, not yet.
Can we get your contact information?
Absolutely. I will leave it with, I'll leave it with her. Yes, absolutely.
Great, any more?
Well, thank you very much, and if we can ever do anything, please, please reach out.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's sell a vehicle here. Kristen.
Hey, can I have a seat?
Yeah. Kristen, will you talk us about the vehicle we have for sale?
Yes. Bring to you the 2008 Kia Corredo. Used to be fire department, I believe it was Smith's original vehicle. So it's got history, and Richard ended with it. So it's currently not working, so we're going to sell it on.
It died, it could be sold.
It declared surplus. The vehicle will be placed on govdeals.com for auction. It will be on the agenda for Monday night.
Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on to the site plan for the Speedway. Ed?
Yes, sir. Obviously, Dennis is not here tonight, so I'm going to present this firm's staff report and package. In your package, you have information on, there's a, there's a drawing in there of the site that you've got to see. The, by the way, Dennis is out west taking his daughter over, seeing a trip in his family, and she was the Carroll County School System Valuetory. Very proud of her, so I want to mention that. So this is, this project's going to be located next to the, to the new Lutz at exit two. It's on the, it's on the east side of Lutz, not on the interstate side, of course. It is C4 C-Store Holding by LLC that is requesting a site plan for the Speedway, Convenience Store, Auto Loaded, and Truck Fueling. The property's located at 211 East Tenth Street. The DRI has been done, the soil and erosion, the seventh plans have been approved, as well as the civil and utility plans. The architectural plans will be submitted to Charles Addams Associates for plan review and approval for the building permit. Campbell Engineering and Planning has tentatively planned its Yemen development in June or July. It's a seven-acre site, 5,000 square foot C-store and gas, 25 car parking spots, 18 truck parking spots. Based on the DRIs, and they'd be involved, the object now will be about $25,000 annually in profit. So that approval of site plan will be on the agenda for the business.
All righty. Any questions, comments? So 25,000 in property tax, 95% in sales tax leaves the city.
5% in the sales tax.
5% in the sales tax. Y'all remember that. 95% leaves our city. All right, no questions, comments, other than my snide remarks? Any announcements this evening?
Well, Ed mentioned about Dennis' daughter. We want to hear about Kristen's daughter, who just got a master's degree.
Yes. From Arizona State.
Awesome.
Special education.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Also, Stephen and I are attending the West Point Active Life Fish Fry, and it was awesome. They partnered with Hobensville, so the food and the company was perfect.
I got to put down.
And also, the Betty LaGale Breast Cancer Event, Dolly is here. It is this weekend at Valley Complex. It's sold out, so no more tickets are available. And I missed the last meeting, but I don't know if anybody mentioned, we sent our condolences to the family of Francis Powell Reeves. Ms. Powell was one of the former Queens Southwest Eastern Beauty Patch of Queens. She was also the former owner of Skinos Furniture Store, those of you who are old enough to remember, and also, she was president at one time for the Valley National Bank. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Congratulations on your son getting married. Megan, you have an announcement?
Yes. So this Sunday is our first Food Truck Sunday at the River Park. We have three food trucks scheduled from 11:30. We have three food trucks scheduled from 11:30 to 6:00. So make sure everybody shares. We announce those food trucks today and we post them each daily. Then Monday, we'll do Popsicles on the Park, which was scheduled for today, but the rain dampened that, so.
Where did you announce them today? Where do we go?
On Facebook. They're on Facebook.
On what site?
On the city's page, on Historic West Point.
Okay.
Yep.
See it everywhere.
Everywhere.
Okay, all right.
And they'll be everywhere, every day.
You can tell the instructions to find that stuff on Facebook sometime. All right, anything else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Is this...